I call to order the meeting of our common council for the meeting of Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 11 members in the room, and we have 12 members present and voting in civic clerk. Alder Stoyer is remote.
Very good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic to stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
And this evening, we are blessed with the attendance of Rabbi Shana Backrak, who is joining us to offer an invocation. So by way of introduction, just read her biography here. Rabbi Backrak was born in Clarkstown, Mississippi during the Jim Crow era before moving with her family to Oklahoma. Her undergraduate degree is in nursing from the University of Oklahoma. Years later, she attended the Jewish Theological Seminary in New York City and was ordained there. She is Rabbi Emeritus of Congregation Knesset Israel in Green Bay. Before her rabbinic ordination, Rabbi Shana worked as a registered nurse, a teacher, and a freelance writer. She's been involved with gift since its inception, and she treasures her interfaith work in building communal bridges. Rabbi Shana is married to Bob, her husband. They have four children, three grandchildren, and a dog and a cat. So with that, Rabbi Shana.
Thank you so much for the invitation. It is an honor. In synagogues this week, our scriptural portion comes from the Book of Deuteronomy. There's a line that especially caught my eye. Every year, I can read the same passages. Every year, something different grabs me. In Hebrew, it begins, "If you see your brother's ox or sheep astray, do not hide your eyes. Return it. Do not pretend to not see it. You cannot ignore it. If you do not immediately find the owner, you have to keep it until you do." And scripture here is unrelenting. We dare not ignore lost or wandering animals. We can't pretend. We can't hide our eyes. We often do. It's easier. We didn't see that, did we? We can't do that. If this is how we treat four-legged animals, what does this say about how we treat people? How we treat our community? It is so tempting to say, to not see misery. It's tempting not to see injustice. It's tempting to ignore the potholes. And this is why you are here, to give your time and energy to this great city that we all love so much. You cannot close your eyes, but instead are here to fix it and make it even better. I ask God to bless you and to strengthen you, because this is an ongoing and not-so-easy endeavor, but an important one. We ask God's blessing that you may continue your work in this great responsibility you have undertaken. May your work be a blessing, and let us say amen.
Thank you so much for your presence and your words, Rabbi. With that, we will move along to approval of our minutes.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and our minutes are approved. On to approval of the agenda.
So who?
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any changes here? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item K3 to K1.
Say that again?
K3 to K1.
So putting K3 in front of K1, essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
Would 0.5 make it more clear?
Yeah, maybe so. We will do that. So there was amendment offered to place K3 in front of K1 on the agenda this evening. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. The agenda has been amended.
Motion to approve is amended.
Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Discussion here. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. Report for the mayor. Just a couple things. From this past weekend, there was a ton going on in town. Ignite Market, Packer preseason game. I also had the pleasure of attending a couple different events within the community, one of which was to recognize Natasha Heideman, who is a graduate of Southwest High, Marquette University, and is in the WNBA. So it was kind of a pretty cool story and a local legend for us. So I had the privilege of giving her a key to the city and celebrating everything that she's done and done to represent the city of Green Bay across the country. So that was great. We also celebrated the one-year anniversary, or milestone, I guess, of the Conservation Corps. So the first class has kind of, the first class of Corps members has moved through their service year. So I want to thank them, of course, for all their work on behalf of the city, and also recognize council for your support of that program. And then upcoming events, we, of course, have Labor Day coming up in a few short weeks here, and so just wanted to encourage members of council, as well as members of the public, to join us at Bay Beach for a Labor Day celebration put on by the Greater Green Bay Labor Council. It's open to everybody. So just encouraging folks to recognize working people and organize labor on Labor Day and come out there and have a brat and a burger or something, and have a good time. So with that, we'll move along to announcements. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Two thanks. One is, when we were recognized earlier this year as the number-one place to live in America, we celebrated. And I think it's equally important for us to celebrate recognition that we just received as the, oh, subsequently to that, by the way, we were also recognized as the number-one most affordable city to live in in America. And now, just recently, we were recognized as the number-one, three-best place to raise a family. So why do we talk about these things? They're important in some respects. There's a PR messaging that goes along with that. It's a very subjective list, but it's based on data sets, right? And it's from company, excuse me, community A to community B to community C. We are performing very, very well as a community. We have our disagreements on things every community does. We have our things to work on. We most certainly do. But I think it's important that we take a moment to celebrate what a special place Green Bay is, and the fact that other people around the country are looking in and saying, "We like what you have." So, second thing, because it's kind of in the Finance Committee report, and I don't know that it would be pulled, but in case it's not, I just wanted to comment real quickly on the, our annual audit. And I said this at Finance Committee. I'm going to say it again here. Kudos and congratulations to the mayor and the department heads, our staff. It is so easy, time and time again, to say, "Oh, government bureaucracies, they waste money on this and that." But our financial performance this year was really, really strong, and staff did an exceptional job with being really great stewards of taxpayer money, and I think that they ought to be publicly acknowledged for that. So thank you to staff and to mayor for your leadership on really doing a good job for the taxpayers of Green Bay.
Thanks, Alder. All credit to staff, obviously, under the leadership of Director Ellen Becker and team at, in the Finance Department, but appreciate those good words. Other announcements? Seeing none. We will move along to recognitions and awards. So this is kind of a special one. In recognition of Melissa Edison's life-saving action in performing the Heimlich maneuver on a coworker, Melissa, of course, as council knows, but members of the public might not, serves in the mayor's office as community liaison, does a fantastic job on all the responsibilities that fall under her purview. This is not typically one of them, thankfully, but when the occasion arose, she really stepped up and did a tremendous job in coming to her coworkers' aid. So Attorney Bungert, I don't know if you had any, anything else to add on that front?
Yes, no. Like the mayor said, Melissa is our community liaison in the mayor's office, and one of our staff members unfortunately experienced a sudden emergency when she began choking. And she, Melissa, acted quickly, calmly performed the Heimlich maneuver, and saved her life. We are grateful to Melissa for her constant efforts and dedication to the city, and wanted to take this opportunity to recognize her incredible action in delivering first aid, which prevented what could have been a tragic outcome for our staff member. So thank you, Melissa.
All right. Well, thanks again to Melissa. And apparently, if you need anything at all, you know, come to the mayor's office, and we'll help you out. On to our appointments. Just reappointments here. Motion to approve these reappointments made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion on the reappointments? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and those reappointments are made. We're now moving along to ordinances. Second reading for adoption. With that amendment, we've got K3 before us, which is an ordinance creating a planned unit development overlay district for property located at 436 South Monroe Avenue. Alder Johnson, you made that amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. Had some conversations with some folks that had some concerns in the area, and then subsequently with the developer, and so like to offer up an amendment to this PUD. Basically, move to amend to add provision, I think F3, if it would still line up with what was originally proposed by staff. Development shall provide evidence of off-street parking availability for 10 additional residential spaces. And if there's a second, I'll just speak to that.
Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And this really just, I mean, this is our opportunity, obviously, to address parking concerns around this area. A number of folks have, it's kind of a tight area. This is, if you've never been around there, and so we just want to make sure that the tenants in that immediate area are protected. And, like I said, I had a conversation with the developer. He didn't really object to this, and this was part of the original recommendation by staff that was removed by Plan Commission. Not sure why, but I think it's, if both parties are agreeing to it, meaning complainants and developer, it just makes sense to me.
Okay. Any thoughts from Director Nierwig? No?
And I would just maybe offer up, Mayor, developers here, I didn't know. If he wants to speak to it, I'd be happy to open the floor, but if not...
Yeah, no obligation to speak, but if you'd like to?
I'll make a motion to open the floor to hear from interested parties.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. And then if you could just state your name and address for the council, and then begin your comments.
Absolutely. Name, Duan Cherry. Address, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. So, yeah, you know, after a conversation with Alder, we were definitely in agreement. I think, more than anything, you know, even it was waived, I just wanted to show my care and compassion for my future residents, tenants. And so I was already doing my due diligence, just making sure that there was an additional, you know, that one-to-one ratio was implemented. No matter if it was waived or not, you know, I take my, I take, you know, pride, care and consideration for tenants that do have disabilities and non-disabilities as well, too, since that's ideally going to be their target here. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, regardless of what the outcome was, that the one-to-one ratio just have the opportunity for, you know, residents that do have cars or not, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
And I would just maybe emphasize that, Mayor. Mr. Cherry was doing this already. I want to be clear about that. This just codifies it in case there's ever a change of use in that particular unit in the future, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to?
Hi, my name is Paul Kosmoski, and I'm with Kosmoski Corporation, address is 1270 Main Street. We own the building at, next door, at 424 South Monroe. I've had a conversation with Brian. I was at the Planning Commission meeting when we were discussing this issue, and I'm glad to see that we're going to meet, looking at meeting the parking requirements, because that is a tight area for businesses. We've had an issue for the last several years on parking and not having a lack of it, because we have several tenants in our building, the Literacy Council and the WIC program, and the NEW Dental Clinic, and there's an overload of parking. So this is ideal, and I'm glad that we're able to accommodate that. And so I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate your efforts. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Entertain a motion?
Motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor, made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. We had a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. That amendment has been adopted.
Motion to adopt was amended.
And so this would require an additional reading, Attorney Bungert. Is that correct before?
No. Text evidence can be made on the floor for the second reading.
Okay, so we're still adopting?
Yes, yep.
Okay, very good. So the motion was made to adopt as amended. That was made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Discussion there. Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. We do need to use the board.
Yep.
Thank you, Alder.
You may vote.
Alder Stoyer, if you could just vote verbally.
Yes, the vote is yes.
Thanks, Alder.
Thank you.
That is adopted unanimously. On to the rest of those ordinances. We have a motion to suspend the rules made by Alder Scannell, and seconded by Alder Stevens. This is to take up all of these items with one roll called vote. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, and we will use the board on that.
You may vote.
Mayor, I vote yes, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. And those are adopted 11 to 1. All right, we'll move along to the report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion on this item?
Alder Morgan?
This is one that affects my district quite a bit, and it's something that I've been trying to attend every meeting about, and I...
That's right.
Yes, this affects my district. It's something I know we have problems through the whole city, and I'm hoping that, I've been attending every meeting I can, trying to keep up on what's going on. It seems like it's a plan that would help Green Bay, especially my east-side area, and I know Ahmad has been really instrumental in pushing this through and getting a great plan, so I'm hoping it's something we can continue and see it through to finish.
Great. Thanks, Alder Morgan. Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and that report and item have been adopted. On to the report of the Improvement in Services Committee.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. Any items here to be handled separately?
Seven.
Seven. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor, the remainder of that report. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it.
Mayor, if the clerk could note an abstention on item number five.
Alder Johnson notes an abstention on item number five. So all in favor of the remainder of that report will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. Wishes on item seven?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. The item was pulled by Alder Johnson. You have the floor.
Yep. Just a question for Director Gneer. Just because I noticed the phrasing, "to accept the report" versus "receive and place on file," you know, I think Alder Eck brought it up in the meeting, and just a general discussion around having the downtown bids kind of provide some input. And I know it's just a report. Are you viewing this report as a directive in any way to act on the recommendations, or will that come later?
We view that as coming later. Excuse me. The report was prepared with the input of a variety of stakeholders, the downtown bids both being party to that. So the report simply documents what Desmond investigated and what their findings are. Personally, I don't have an issue with an "accept" versus a "receive and place on file." What I informed the committee is the report's not going to change. The report is what the report is. So I thought it was prudent to accept the report. We will then take the recommendations that were part of that report and pull together a list of implementation steps and bring that back, and that will have to be acted upon independently by the committee and then recommendation for council approval.
Okay, appreciate that. I just kind of wanted to understand the difference in terminology, and if there was an alternative intent there, but it doesn't sound like it.
No. What we've been informed by Law Department recently is, "receive and place on file" provides the ability, it's essentially being tabled. It can be brought back, whereas an "accept" or "deny" is a final action.
Got it, okay. And I think the directive at the committee level was to just reach out to the bids for any sort of feedback that they might have, but that may come with policy anyway down the road, I presume.
Well, not only the bids, there are a number of stakeholders that we were directed to reach out to.
Sure.
The bids being among them.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, any other comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and that has been adopted or accepted. Report of the Protection Policy Committee.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately?
Seven.
Seven. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor, the remainder of the report. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. The report has been adopted with the exception of item seven. Wish is here.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. This item was pulled by Alder Stevens.
Yes, we'd like to send this back to committee.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Alder Stevens makes a motion to return this item to the Protection Policy Committee. That was seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion on that or questions? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and that motion succeeds.
Motion to reconsider.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to reconsider. Which item?
Item K1. Well, the K1 prior to amendment.
K3 was amended, so K1.
Right, so more specifically, the item...
One second. So Alder Johnson, one second. Go ahead.
Yeah, more specifically, the item related to massage establishments. I think that escaped my attention. I think that there are people here, so I do think a motion to reconsider, to allow discussion on that item.
Right. Alder Johnson makes a motion to reconsider item K1, seconded by Alder Burnett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and that item is before us. Alder Scannell?
Does that then mean Alder has to change their vote?
Um, no, I don't think so. I mean, now it's before us, so we're going to have a fresh vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did we need to finish seven first?
What?
No, I think we did.
We did.
Yeah, that's been dispensed with. So we're on K1. Alder Burnett?
Kind of probably beat Alder Johnson to this point, but I'd make a motion to open the floor.
Yeah. Motion to open the floor made by Alder Burnett, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the floor is open. So for those in attendance who'd like to speak to this item, this is the ordinance creating Section 10-95 Green Bay Municipal Code relating to massage establishments. I'm not sure if we have any slips.
I did not get any slips.
Okay, we don't have any slips up here, so if folks would like to speak to the massage ordinance, just approach the podium, state your name and address, and we'll take it from there. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mary Poulter. My address is 3239 Leibel Street in Alaway, but I am a licensed massage therapist. I have been practicing since 2012. I understand this committee and this legal team are very proud of this ordinance that they've written, and they've heard little from us when it comes to making it right. And they've made a few changes, but there's more that needs to be changed because it's still very constricting. And I will just go through, point by point, some of the things that I see that can harm us, that you don't see because they're not obvious to a layperson. So, and how it harms, overlapping establishments within a business in Section 1 Part C, how many $75 instances can be conveyed or required in one building if we're all independent practitioners? That's one. And I'm wondering, is this a matter of asking permission or begging forgiveness ordinance? The terms of it being from May 1st to April 30th of every calendar year, with licenses and photocopies and all of those things from the DMV, we can go and get those things from the DMV in the day that it needs to be done, but for this, we have to be there March 31st with our fees and everything. There's a code regarding signage. If our building is on a corner and has a sign facing east and a sign facing north, is that then two signs in violation? If our owner of our building decides to put our name up on their flashing LED sign, are then we not in compliance because of that? Hours of operation, you want to constrain us from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, but that doesn't take into account, like, when, what does "closed" mean to you? What does "closed" mean to us? If I take an appointment at 8:00, and because reasons, my client is still in the room on the table at 9:30, am I in violation? Or if there's a sports event or a music event, and I take a client after hours because of that, am I out of compliance? Is that a fine or a fee for me because I'm out of compliance? Furthermore, Part D talks about massage therapist needs to be licensed. Yes, very much, absolutely yes. That could be your only rule, and we'd be good. Further on from that, Part E, no one under 18 without written or verbal consent. Sometimes we only have the verbal, we don't have the written, but the inspector is here, and I'm rushing through this in realization of three-minute time constraint. But going forward, there's a part about no intoxicating beverages in there. We don't want to make people drunk. Drunk plus massage is very bad for business. If you come in intoxicated or hungover, we will make you more drunk and sick. It's not a good thing. But if my client brings me a bottle of wine from Italy when they come back, or if I want to exchange the homebrew that I made, then that's on my premises, and that's a violation. If I have a fundraiser box of Suji's candy bars on my table because my kid is raising money for a sports event, that's a violation. I don't understand why those things need to be in your bill to make it a strong ordinance for us.
Ma'am, your three minutes have expired.
Okay.
Any questions for our guests? Alder Stevens?
Is your establishment in the city of Green Bay?
I actually practice in Bellevue right now, but I'm looking to move into Main Avenue on Green Bay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Alder Johnson?
Are there any other points on your sheet?
That you really wanted to emphasize?
I really wanted to emphasize, there's a part about the sheets, linens, and towels. Yes, we want to have clean, fresh sheets for everybody, but if we have an absolute disaster and something spills all over those linens, and suddenly we're out for the day, and we're going to go home and do laundry, but your inspector comes through and we have nothing, then we're again in violation, and it's something we're going to take care of anyway. But yes, we want to have fresh sheets. The grounds to revoke and suspend, but what are those rules? We're all against human trafficking. We're all against illicit establishments. We have a license... We have a license from the state. We have things that we need to do to maintain that on a biannual basis. We do those things. We try to proceed as ethically as we possibly can and would like to be in compliance with the rules of the city of Green Bay. We just ask that you listen to us when it comes to establishing these rules.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Any other folks who'd like to speak to this item?
Steph LaCianda. My address is one five two seven South Douglas Street, Appleton, Wisconsin, five four nine one four. So, I'm a travel therapist. I work as a mobile massage therapist, but I've been wanting to open a practice in Green Bay. I think overall, the, I know I have a little bit of time, so I'm not sure if any of the Alders got a Google Doc that I shared with them. There, I sent two Google Docs. One kind of highlighted the ordinance and areas that actually do regulate massage therapy instead of the establishment. And then, just to highlight with that too, our state license does have certain aspects of establishment into, written into the state law, such as the linens and sanitary practices and things like that. Overall, I believe we just want to be exempt from this ordinance. We do believe there should be an ordinance. The state law says there should be ordinances to cut down on people that are unlicensed practicing massage, so you know, we do support that. We just want to be exempt from this particular ordinance, the way that it's written. In another Google Doc, my letter to the council members, I included the eight cities in Wisconsin that have massage ordinances, two of them, one being Kenosha and the other one being Green Bay, would have factors that create an undue burden to massage therapists. So, we would like to suggest that maybe those other massage ordinances are looked at where it's very similar to the one that you have drafted already, only it's more about establishment and less about the massage therapist. And you know, I think if we can get to that kind of language that makes us exempt because we are healthcare practitioners, even the current proposed ordinance states, it's like one word away from saying that we are exempt, but I believe that because of our status as state healthcare practitioners, we should be included in that exemption. This ordinance, you know, it's to be able to find out where we're working, but there's so many massage therapists that you're not gonna know about because they work at other wellness clinics that a healthcare practitioner runs. And so, it just seems like, you know, if you really are wanting to figure out where all the massage therapists are working, you know, I mean, that's why we have the state license look up. That's a public knowledge, you know. Do I think that we should have our establishment addresses listed on there? Yes. Is that something we can work pretty quickly on with the state? Of course, I've already been in contact with DSPS, and I'm hoping to resolve this very quickly because, you know, we do agree that we need the local law enforcement to be able to distinguish, like, is this a real business or is this a, you know, somebody imposing as healthcare practitioners? Overall, you know, I'd like to hope that it gets pulled tonight and taken back to get reviewed, maybe work with some other local leaders.
Ma'am, three minutes have expired?
Okay.
All right, thanks. Any questions from our council? Alder Stevens?
So, in your comments, you said that you wanted to open a business here in Green Bay. Is there a reason why you haven't pulled that trigger previously?
Um, it hasn't really been a need until this year, where a lot of my clients that I normally practice on maybe aren't, like, they're in a hotel, and the hotel doesn't have a proper layout for a massage table, like Kohler Lodge, for instance, is just one example, like, there's not enough room to put a table in that massage room or in the hotel room, even though that's all within our scope as a mobile practice, but it's just becoming more of a need. Sometimes they have, my clients have family in town, and they can't have someone come to their house to massage them, so they want to go to another establishment. I have used some of my friends' offices or chiropractors' office, but I'm, you know, I don't want to keep asking people for like these favors. I'd rather just pay a few hundred dollars a month and have my own little office.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thanks a lot. Any other individuals who'd like to offer testimony?
Hi, my name's Sarah Krieger. I live in Bellevue, but my massage practice is located at twelve seventy Main Street in Green Bay. I've been practicing for two years, and I think there's some obvious miscommunication between everybody here. I feel like we should have been contacted with working with this ordinance. As all of these other professionals have said, we are more than happy to work with you and try to figure out the best way to go about this. We want the illicit spas closed as well. We don't want them around. They give us a bad name, those of us who are licensed healthcare practitioners. Our businesses don't run, on average, the way that you guys think. I don't have an open sign. If you don't have an appointment with me, you're not getting into my office. So, there's a lot of, lot of gray area here that you guys, I guess, don't really see because you're not fully familiar with our practice. And I think we would love to sit down with you guys and kind of work on this ordinance.
Thanks for your testimony. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy Barden. I live in Crivets, Wisconsin. I am a three-year resident of Wisconsin. I came from Illinois. I've been a massage therapist for twenty-seven years. I'm a senior therapist to many of them. We had this similar sort of thing happen in Illinois many times. We don't want the tulip massage, the tulip spa that we drove past on our way here to sustain existence. They have boarded up windows, and they have a sign in the window that says massage. The only people that are allowed to use the phrase massage and massage therapist are those that are licensed. That is your first clue to writing a ticket to get that establishment shut down for a day or two. Repeatedly go to their door and shut them down for a simple code violation with our massage license. We have that already spelled out for you. All you have to do is implement it. And we, massage therapists in the area, are more than happy to sit down and tell you who to go after because we know who they are too. We're not fond of them. We want them gone. We also understand this is organized crime, and we also understand that it's hard to fight crime, but we want to help you with the tools and not be burdened with regulations that we already have in place. So, please, talk to us. We know what's going on.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Alder Stevens? Just one second.
You've been in Crivets for how long?
Three years.
Three years?
I work in Marinette, and I work in Crivets.
Okay. Is there a reason why you haven't done Green Bay yet?
I'm not gonna do an hour drive.
Okay.
I no longer will drive to go to work when I am semi-retired.
Okay. It's all good. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Anyone else?
I apologize. I did not know that you could be from outside of Green Bay, so I did not volunteer to speak. My name is Danielle Vanderveldt. I live in Maribel, Wisconsin. I have a yoga studio in Denmark, Wisconsin. I opened my studio about two years ago, and before that, I worked in finance for about ten years. And I really took pride in everything I did, from my career to the switch of my career to helping people emotionally, physically, through yoga, and now through massage therapy. I went to school. I sacrificed a lot for my family, and now I'm being looped into a very negative ordinance. I am not a sex worker. I never want to be affiliated with it, and by including me into that, you are affiliating a massage therapist with these type of workers. That's not fair to me. That's not fair to my fellow therapist. It's not fair to my children. It's not fair to my family. So, I think go after the people that are really creating the crimes and doing the wrong here. Leave us out. We want to be removed, but we will support whatever you need in creating a bill that's going to keep our community safe, and also, you have a whole group of alliance here that's gonna help you do it as well. You know, we don't want to fight against you. We don't want to resist it. We want to be here and aligned with you and stop us as well. That's all.
Thanks for testimony. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Motion to close the floor? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Do we have a motion here? Alder Johnson?
Yeah. Couple of questions, mayor. This one's for Chief Davis. If you could help me and others understand, I know it's been talked about in the past, and of course, I missed the last meeting, so please, to my colleagues, forgive me if this is redundant of anything that was talked about at the last meeting. I know that this issue's been talked about for several years, and of course, it's come to a head now. What is it right now with the current law that prohibits our police department from enforcing whatever law it is that needs to be enforced to shut these facilities down?
There's a few issues that we're trying to solve for here. One is that, and I think the city attorney's office can probably speak more eloquently on this part than I can, but it's, this makes a connection between your city business license and the state requirement that massage therapists be licensed. Right now, if we catch someone practicing massage without the proper state licensure, the most that you're looking at is a citation, and that person could conceivably be right back in business as soon as we're not looking anymore. The other issue is-
Does this current ordinance change that?
Pardon me?
Does this current ordinance change that?
Yes. Because what it does now is it connects the state license requirement. It's kind of analogous to an alcohol service, a premise that's licensed to serve alcohol. There's state regulations, and this gives us city regulations that we can use to take action against a business that repeatedly violates the state licensure rules instead of just, the, another analogy would be if I catch you speeding on the freeway, I'm gonna give you a traffic ticket, and then five minutes later, I catch you speeding on the freeway, I'm gonna give you a traffic ticket, and that's as far as I can go. I can keep giving you traffic tickets, and maybe eventually a judge will suspend your license or take some other action. This allows the city the ability to go after, the ability to operate a business in the city for people who violate this rule that they be licensed. The other issue is that, you know, what we're really trying to get at, and I think someone brought this up, we're really trying to get at is issues of human trafficking and illegal sex work, violations of our prostitution rules. It is extremely hard to make cases on businesses that operate as fronts for prostitution because obviously, for obvious reasons, I don't think anyone in the community wants me to send a police officer undercover or a testifying informant or something like that into one of these businesses to procure the service. It's not like a drug deal where I can send an informant or I can send a police officer to go buy drugs because they're not using the drugs. If they do, that's a problem for us. There's no way to make one of these cases really effectively with that in the way that we would a drug case. And so, you know, this is intended to get at those licensure violations that we see in illicit massage establishments. And the last thing I would say is, you know, there's also, it's an attempt to fulfill our responsibility to ensure the health and safety and welfare of our community. And so, you know, we wouldn't be bringing this forward if we believed that we had the tools to address these other issues that unfortunately we are seeing. In that very small subsection of the population, all the folks who came here to testify obviously are legitimate business owners, and we respect that. That's not who we're interested in working on in this ordinance.
Okay. Attorney Bungert, I recall an email that came out from your office. I forget the name of the organization, American Massage Association, something of that nature, that said, here's how you write a local ordinance, and you did an analysis on that to see if our ordinance was in alignment with their recommendations. What was your finding on that?
Yes, so, our finding was that we hit all the do's and avoided all the don'ts that were recommended. The only thing that was missing was a preamble or a purpose section to the ordinance, which wasn't really legally required or necessary because it was strictly an establishment regulation versus regulating something that could potentially be a constitutional violation. So, we're not regulating any protected class or anything that has been deemed of a protected class standing, but simply businesses generally and equally.
Okay. And then, and I don't know, Attorney Bungert, if this came out of your department, but the seventy-five dollar fee that was drafted into the ordinance, can you just speak to that fee? Why that number was chosen? Why a fee was imposed?
Sure. So, it's never, drafting fees within an ordinance is never a unilateral decision on the part of the drafter. It came to fruition by discussing basically overhead costs or administrative costs, pass-through costs, that are gonna be required by the various departments that are gonna be executing this ordinance. So, that would be time, staff for the police department, and doing background checks for inspectors, in the inspections department, the clerk's office, that will, you know, spend time and resources in taking in the applications and issuing the permits. And so, the cost and time that is necessary for staff to effectuate the permits is what is calculated to reimburse us for that.
How many, how many massage therapists do we anticipate within the city of Green Bay that will require a license?
Um, I don't know if we have, how many? I think there would be like less than ten from what we understand, but I think within the city of Green Bay that we are aware of. That's what we've heard in discussions, but again, that's just a piece of information we've come by.
Sure. Okay. And admittedly, like, I was on the fence when this came through because I appreciate a lot of the concerns that have been brought forth today, you know, in that I think you're never disadvantaged by including more people in the conversation, and I think given the outreach that we've had from a lot of folks, I think it's evident that maybe we could've done a slightly better job on that front, and I don't think it was intentional on anybody's part to exclude anyone from the discussion. I just think sometimes that's how these things evolve. And I wish we had a better mechanism to do that kind of outreach, to really engage in dialogue with anyone who's ever impacted by any of our ordinance changes. The reality is, any ordinance change we ever have does impact people, sometimes negatively, sometimes positively. You know, I appreciate the chief's point about the connection with the state law. I mean, I just, because I'm also empathetic particularly to Alder Eck because this affects her district probably the most of any, and I know this has been talked about for years, and we, I think, and I don't think I'm misrepresenting council here, but I think we all collectively agree, we need to crack down on the problems that exist in our community. This has emerged thus far is the best way to do that, even if there's some language in here that could be modified. The one thing that I think I don't really like is the fact that we are imposing a fee, which to me is more punitive to the people who have a state permit, who are doing what they're supposed to do. We're trying to react to a problem in our community, and the way that we do it is by imposing this fee on those that are not our problem, right? And so, that piece to me doesn't feel good, and especially if we're talking about seven hundred fifty dollars.
Seventy-five dollars.
I know, times ten, right? So, again, whether that ten number is right or not, but the reality is, I think, I don't know what the seventy-five dollar fee does. I get it covers our costs, but we're creating that need right here through this policy and really something that's not even a requirement right now because the state provides a license. So, I'm gonna make a motion, and I'll just see, you know, how it pans out, but first, a question for Attorney Bungert. a question for Attorney Bunkert. Can we have a license without a fee?
Attorney Bunkert?
Yes, so that's entirely up to the discretion of counsel. I don't believe a fee is necessary in order to make the ordinance effective, but obviously, that is not going to be, essentially, we're not going to get our costs covered for the time spent in reviewing-
Correct.
-the permits. But, that's essentially the only downfall in not having the permit, but it doesn't hurt the effectiveness of the ordinance.
Okay. And more than anything, I just wanted to understand if that was illegal, if we could have that, and I don't know how the rest of counsel will react to it, but again, I just, I think it's a punitive on those who are really not the subject of this particular ordinance. So, I'm going to make a motion that we strike that fee.
Alder Johnson makes the amendment that he's described, or makes a motion to adopt that amendment, is there a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Hutchison. Alder Burnett on the amendment?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for, assuming Clerk Jeffries, this goes through your office, am I not mistaken?
That.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct. Just like with other licenses, there would be, as Attorney Bunkert had mentioned, some other entities involved, which would include police and development department.
So, through your office, you deal with animal licensing, liquor licensing, and a host of other licenses, is that correct?
Many, yes, that's correct.
Do you have concerns with the no revenue generating, we're not trying to generate revenue, but we're trying to offset costs, and you do that by generating revenue. In regards to your budget and the amount of volume of work that your staff will have to take on, do you have concerns about $0 for the application?
I do indeed. That, when we discuss at Finance Committee, the fee schedule, there are some costs that I've included that would better cover the cost of processing some other licenses, and so, I would absolutely have a concern about $0 for covering our costs. You know, unfortunately, Alder Burnett and Alder Johnson, I cannot, with some other licenses, I can tell you how much it costs our office, with this license, I can't tell you because we haven't done it yet.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk.
Thanks, Alder. And we've got a few in the queue, just want to make sure that we're on the amendment. So, we've got Alder Scanell, Campbell, and Morgan, all on the amendment. Scanell?
I oppose the amendment. We reduced this fee already, and $75 a year is not a burden, shouldn't be considered a burden for someone in this profession. And certainly, they have some interest, I could make a pun, but I won't, in the welfare, in the city, doing this ordinance and doing this process to catch the imposters. That's what this will do. This will catch the imposters, this will weed out those who are posing as bona fide therapists, and they're not. That's what we're doing here. And that's a benefit to all, and I believe that this profession can ante up $75 a year to help cover our costs, to help them, as much as us, and the businesses, our businesses and our city, clean up what's been a problem for a long time. So, I think asking them to help cover administrative costs is, it's all we're doing. We've already reduced it. I don't think that's an undue burden or inappropriate. That's it for that.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell?
Yeah, going back to the fees there, I wish I could piggyback off Alder Burnett's. Such as a state licensed fee, whether it be cigarettes, alcohol, ammo, or whatever, and all the license that you handle that are somewhat similar to also a state licensed thing, how many are there, and what would you say the average is of them? I mean, is there an average, or Clerk Jeffries?
Question for Clerk Jeffries, can you clarify the question a little bit?
You know, if we talk about all the other businesses that also have state license, like such as alcohol, Class A, Class B, Class B combo, not trying to use that for, but everybody knows about that, that's I guess why we use it, not trying to compare the businesses to that type. But, to the ordinance of being able to hold them, you know, liable for not sticking to the ordinance, I mean, that's what we're trying to do here. But, my question is, is, could you just go briefly down the list of some of the fees here, just for public?
For liquor licenses?
Yeah.
Yes, certainly. So, currently, a class, so Class A away, Class B bar, for instance, Class C wine. So, Class A away is 400 for beer, and then 400 for liquor, intoxicating liquors. Class B is 400 for intoxicating liquors, 100 for beer, and Class C, I believe, is 100. There are limits, so, what's interesting about liquor licenses, certainly in many states, including Wisconsin, is that liquor licenses, although mandated and regulated by the state, are issued by the city, by the municipality. So, we have a quota of licenses, Class Bs in particular, that we can issue, and so that fee actually comes directly to us, although we are basically issuing those licenses as part of a state program, if you will. So, we actually, we are going to propose a raise in some of those licensing fees for the Class B, and I think also the Class A. So, I think that answers your question, Alder.
A little bit, just, how about, just say a small business, do we have a retail business license in the city?
We do not. That's a very good question. We do not have a generic business license for clothiers, for people who sell furniture. We do have a license for people who do our secondhand dealers, so, one of my favorite places over on the west side of town, they are secondhand dealers in many goods, including jewelry, and they would have a secondhand dealer's license.
What about, what about people that do business out of their homes? Something similar to that?
Sure. So, there's, I would say first and foremost, those come under zoning issues, whether or not someone can do that business in their home. And then, again, you cannot sell alcohol in your home, you, just going through all the licenses we have, so we have solicitor's license, we have direct seller's license, so potentially, some of those people could be storing those things in their home, but that licensed activity is actually not taking place in their home, but rather out of their home, for instance, for a direct seller or a solicitor.
Yeah, okay. I mean, there's just public understanding on that and clarification of fees, and of people that are, you know, but they do have a registered document, everything we just talked about, saying that they can operate a business, whether it be in their home or in an establishment, correct?
Especially for liquor licenses, as you know, we do not issue licenses to places that don't exist. So, yes, if you have a liquor license, that means you have a place in which to operate. Operators have, or bartenders have licenses to do their business, and they can do their business, be operators, be bartenders in many different places. But, same thing with solicitors, and I mean, it gets a little complicated, I think, with all the licenses that we issue.
How about like, services, like lawn cutting? I mean, that's very popular today, landscaping, you know, people that have second jobs, second businesses, you know? That's what I'm trying to say. But, they're all licensed, they're all registered in the city?
No. So, if you're cutting lawns, that, there's no requirement for you to have a license. If you are installing sprinklers, or trimming trees, or installing sidewalks, then you will have to have a license. But, if you have like, a little side hustle, and you're cutting lawns, and you've got something on the side of your truck, there isn't a license per se for that. Again, Director Renier Weg can get into more detail with you about zoning for storing your equipment in a residential area, but that's not a license per se.
Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Because I think that's really important for people to understand, that everybody wants to make a little money. I mean, they legitimately should charge sales tax and such on their services or goods. I mean, that's a state law, and they could get caught for not doing it. You know, this ordinance, I would hope that the people that are here today understand that, you know, and maybe that's a state license requirement, just as if you pay the federal in alcohol taxes, and, because that has to do with age, and minors, and such. So, thanks, thanks for the clarification of all that.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Morgan?
First, I'd like to address that $75 fee. It originally came to protection and policy as $100, and I don't remember which Alder, but they thought maybe we should give him a little more break, and they suggested the 75, so, we voted on that. That wasn't brought up originally, it was $100. And part of our protection and policy, we constantly get people appealing fees they get for inspections and stuff like that, and it gets quite costly for the city to keep doing these follow-ups, so I think we do need to recover our costs somehow. I'm not sure the exact fee, what it should be. And also, the thing people, and I know a few of the people here, I don't think remember on this, this is actually an ordinance to govern the building, the establishment. I've heard a few of them say that you have a couple of girls, or therapists, or I don't know if they're male or female, that work there. I know one young lady, I believe, said she works at 1270 Main. I have another person sent me a letter, said she works at 1270 Main, I'll just use her initials, M.D. So, we're not asking for each one of these people to get a Green Bay permit, it's the building itself would get the permit and pay the fee, whatever we decide it to be, and as many therapists as want can work there. Also, if they want to go work at Lambo Field and do this, they can do it, they don't need a permit like this to do that. Someone mentioned the Kohler Building, well, that's actually in the Village of Ashwabnik, but you can go there, you don't need to get this permit to go work there and do therapists' work. So, just a little definition on those things.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Hutchison?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this ordinance is extremely burnsome to those in this business. It's not the $75 fee, even though I'm very much supporting reducing that to zero. It's the potential grounds that a business who's licensed under this ordinance can be found guilty of something, and then it revoked. If you look under the grounds to revoke something, there's 14 ways that the grounds, that there are grounds to revoke a license, and some of these may be totally not known to the owner of the business. So, to me, having 14 ways just already written down that a business can be shut down, and these would be businesses we're not targeting, we're targeting awful illegal businesses. This is putting everyone through the, at the airport, where you go through and you got to get checked, this is pushing everyone in this business through this portal, and treating them like they're guilty until they're found innocent through the check. And then-
If members of the gallery could please hold your reactions.
I mean, this was written to help find those bad actors, okay? It wasn't written with the thought in mind that there's good actors, a lot of good actors, mostly good actors, it was written to find the bad actors and root them out, okay? And I can, I can agree with that, but to make this ordinance part of our ordinances in Green Bay is threatening the businesses coming to Green Bay and working. If I had a choice to work in Green Bay or Bellevue, and Bellevue didn't have this, I would work in Bellevue, absolutely, 100%. This is really, really restrictive, and, you know, and the hoops you have to go through, you have to get administrative approval, the chief of police has to run a background check of the business. Again, this is a business license, not an individual license. But then, after that, the director of community and economic development has to send someone to the premises and inspect it. Then after that, the common council-
Alder Eck, a point of order?
Because we're talking about the fee right now, correct? I just wanted to bring it back.
Well, these are things that would affect the fee, right? Because our police department's going to have to run the background check, right? So, that's a cost, that's what we're telling them to do.
Just a reminder, to keep your comments to the amendment.
Okay. So, then, the director of community and economic development will have to send someone out and look at the building, right? That'll affect our costs. And I'm for, if we're going to do this, the, those people who are been sanctioned by the state to do what they did, they got a degree, they got taught, they get this degree, and then they come to Green Bay and they have to do it, they have to fulfill these things for a business, it seems overdone, and I think it can be done a different way. And I guess, we do have ordinances, I have a question for the attorney. We have the general ordinance 34-20. Now, that does everything except establish a permit for a business, in terms of, if there's someone working who doesn't have a license, you can bill them, or ticket them, and you can ticket the owner of the business they work for. Yeah, it's written, I talked to an attorney at the, it says here, "No person or business shall employ or contract for the services of an individual to practice massage therapy or bodywork therapy unless the individual is licensed under Wisconsin." Statute 460.02. And then, the penalty, "Any person who shall violate any provision," which refers to the person or the business, okay, "A subject one shall upon conviction forfeit not less than one or more than $1,000." Okay? So, we already have a way to go after unlicensed by the state, people and businesses, right?
Just to, Alder, just to reiterate Alder Eck's point of order, your comments kind of need to be on the amendment itself, you can make additional comments at final passage.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Alder Eck?
Thank you, Mayor. So, and I was involved in the policy and protection at the committee meeting, and when it was reduced from 100 to 75, and actually, I voted, I couldn't vote because I'm not on the committee, but I asked them not to go lower, because I think that it's reasonable. I don't want it to cost more for the city to do this than, you know, I don't want it to cost the city money. So, I believe that we should charge a license.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scanell?
Fee, I should say.
No, no, no.
First, second time? No? All right. Any other comments on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? So, the, to, yes, just a reminder, the amendment is to eliminate the fee associated with the registration. So, all in favor of that amendment will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
It appears that the nays have it. We will use the board.
You may vote.
Mayor, I vote no.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. All right, and that amendment fails 93. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Campbell. Additional comments on adoption? Alder Hutchison?
Um, yeah. Again, I think the intent is good. I think it's trying to pick up worms off the street with baseball bats. It's too big, it's too bulky, it's too restrictive, it could be a lot better, and I know the, I know why it was written this way, because we really want to get the bad actors off the street. But I think, in the process, we lost sight of the good actors, I really, really do, and I think this could be a lot better. So, I am not in favor of this motion, I'm going to vote no, and hopefully, we can get a better ordinance.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Scanell?
I couldn't disagree with the Alder more, and I think, you know, for example, I think the analogy of using an airline security check is pretty valid, we're having everybody go through this, but then to say that we're assuming guilt- But then to say that we're assuming guilt, no, no one going through there is assumed guilty until the alarm goes off. You're assumed innocent until the alarm goes off, and that's the purpose. And that alarm goes off, then we've weeded out the bad actors. So, I, 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 there is perhaps some burden on some massage therapists who are going to open up a brick building. Anybody opening up a brick building is going to have hoops jump through no matter what. This is an extra hoop. It's there not to harass them. It's there to help weed out bad actors. This is what we need to do. This is what our legal department and police department have sat down and hashed out to just simply say, oh, we can do better without, I mean, this is what our professionals who know their job, the legal department and the police, who know the situation, have presented to us and have told us, this is it. I trust their expertise, and I appreciate and am glad that we have had input from massage therapists. We have used that input. We have made amendments to the, changes to this ordinance. We have reduced the fee. We have listened to them. But to listen to them and say, no, we're not going to go forward with this, I think is hurting our community. This is a problem we've had for way too long, and we're finally at a point where we can address it. And I'm hoping we all step forward and do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Before we go to Alder Ek, Attorney Bunker had something?
Yes, just wanted to, to address the point that Alder Hutchinson made. Yes, currently, we have an ordinance. It's actually ten dash ninety-four under our recot. I just wanted to make sure that we were under the same one. The practice of massage or bodywork therapy requires state licensing. And you're correct, we are able to issue a ticket to the business owner or to the therapist if they lack licensing. But what, where it ends is it's just a citation. It's just a forfeiture in municipal court. We have no ability to be able to take any other kind of public nuisance action against repeat offenders that don't comply. Essentially, police could go in every day and tick it and tick it and tick it, and there's nothing that gives us the ability to be able to take it to the next level to remove a problematic business from our city that's hurting the community or potentially taking advantage of, of, of individuals and victimizing people. And, and another point that I wanted to clarify is that I do understand that, that a large focus of, of the ordinance for, from, from most people is the fact that it's, it's to root out the bad actors. And from our perspective, when we were drafting this ordinance, it really was for the purpose of, of ensuring that the public was protected and ensuring public safety, welfare. That is always the purpose of every ordinance. I do think, and, and we're not going to, you know, sidestep it, that obviously, a collateral result of this ordinance will be going after, will be resulting in, in going after bad actors. But that never was really the, the intent of it. It was allowing us to make sure that the businesses that do operate in the city are doing so in a safe manner that's protecting our citizens and our community and our neighborhoods. So, I just wanted to make sure that that, that's all on everyone's mind and clarify that.
Thanks, Attorney Bunker. Alder Ek, and then Alder Morgan?
Thank you, mayor. So, I wanted to just kind of give a little bit of history behind some of this. And so, the currently proposed ordinance was started in two thousand and fifteen by Alder Steuer. Then later, Alder Weary helped move it forward. It was sent to outside counsel, who used other municipalities as an example for what should be included. Then it was sent back to our legal department for finishing touches. So, my understanding that it's been kind of on the shelf for a couple of years. After I was elected, I was approached by one of the business districts to ask if I was willing to help move it across the finish line. Because we were concerned about the number of illegitimate spas, and, you know, we've talked about that popping up throughout our city, that I think we can all agree is a real, a very real blight in our community. Alder Grant and I both agreed to help. So, we met with Detective Pacola from the GBD and Detective Matt Wilson at the Brown County Sheriff's Office to get input. We met with our city's attorneys as well. Our legal department has spent a lot of time making sure that the ordinance is both legal and does not interfere with state statutes. We've also received input from local massage therapists who are in support of the ordinance. Some are concerned about speaking out in public in fa, in favor of it for fear of negative repercussions. As Alder Johnson mentioned, all of us city council members received information from the American Massage Therapy Association, shortened A.M.T.A., that gave suggested dos and don'ts regarding local ordinances. I forwarded the information to our legal department, and they reviewed the information and have determined that the proposed ordinance complies with the suggestions the A.M.T.A. provides. We know that our state statute will always trump a city ordinance in the case of a discrepancy. And we understand, I know I understand, with anything new, there can be concerns about how it will affect you. But I believe in the grand scheme of things that this will have a positive outcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Morgan, then Alder Weary?
I just would like to know if we could open the floor one more time. We have a couple of people have been raising their hands in the audience, and I'd like to make a motion to open the floor.
Okay, Alder Morgan makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Floor is open. And customary, yeah, you bet. Customarily, we don't, you know, offer multiple opportunities to speak, so if you just keep a brief...
I understand. I appreciate the opportunity. I come from Arizona, and when I started practicing in two thousand and five, one way that they shut down illegal businesses, and this is why I'm kind of not understanding and getting so frustrated, because when we register as massage therapists, we have to register with IRS and the Wisconsin Financial Institution. So, it would be like, what do you do to people that are selling liquor without a liquor license? Like, our state license is the liquor license, and it says you can punish people who are practicing locally without a license. So, how do you handle that? Because with IRS, if they're practicing massage therapy without a license, they're, it's like drug, drug dealing. They are not reporting that income. So, their businesses should be automatically shut down, and their assets should be freeze until IRS can determine where those funds came from. Even their legitimate businesses get shut down. So, you know, that's one reason I'm not, like, understanding why local authority can't get them. Like, how do they get every other big name, like mobster or whatever? It's IRS. Like, that's how they, you shut down the business and keep them from ever preventing again or practicing, pretending to be massage therapists. And so, you know, I would just like you to consider that anyone who is, is practicing massage without a license, they are also, like, not reporting that income. It's not just like a regular business where they, you know, don't have to report exactly what it is. Our business has a specific section in IRS. And if, if they're not licensed, then they can't report that income to the IRS. So, you know, I just wanted to leave that there and let you know that, you know, there are ways to address this without these ordinances. How do you think the forty-eight, forty-nine other states do this without these local ordinances? If you, I talked to the Wisconsin State Library, the, at the DOJ, and they said that there, there's four states that don't have ordinances. Three of them don't even have state licensing, and one of them was Wisconsin. So, it's like, where do we want to be in history? And do you really want to, like, you know, I really think it should be pulled back and looked because it just seems like there's these major things that seem so obvious to handle this situation that's not being handled. And, you know, this is just one example. So, I just wanted to say that, like, in other states, that is how they permanently shut down the businesses, was because they weren't reporting that income to IRS. Thank you.
All right, motion. Motion to close the floor by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Scanell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Alder Ek did an excellent job of summarizing how we got here, and, you know, who does, there are people who support it, as she had mentioned. Myself, Alder Steuer, Grant, and Ek have been working on this for, for eight years. It's been, it's been maddening. It's like banging a head against the wall. I think the attorney's office will, will vouch that I've pestered them probably more than anybody on this issue, and the past attorneys too, because we would farm it out, and, and we just wouldn't be coming back. We're like, what is going on here? Because we would get asked, what's going on? And we would, we would reply, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. For eight years, we're working on it, and we're finally here with this. This ordinance licenses businesses, not the practitioner. And I understand, you know, they might not want to be looped in with what's going on at some of these businesses, but we kind of already are, whether or not we adopt this ordinance. And, and so, that's unfortunate. It is what it is. But we're attacking the business, the illegitimate business. Prostitution and especially sex trafficking is a nasty issue, something that we can't be blind to. We can't say, well, we'll try and deal with it down the line, and we're, we're taking a stab at it here, and we need everybody to help. We need everybody to help on this, so this should be a no-brainer. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scanell?
Mayor?
Alder Steuer, go ahead.
Thank you, your honor. I concur with the, with Alder Ek. She gave a very good synopsis of, of what we've been going through over the last six, seven, eight years. And, you know, we've met with many business owners, for example, along Military Avenue, who are very concerned. And I realize we're looking at kind of the West Side area that we, we felt the problem was in. It's around the city as well, but, you know, we've, we've gone through this numerous times. One of the things that we can look at too is that, once this ordinance is in place, you know, see how it goes for a while. We have amended ordinances in the past. Maybe after a year, something might come up where we say, we got to tweak it or, or do something different. But we need something in place. And I really feel that the attorney's job did a, the attorney's office did a wonderful job on this. We did listen to some of the massage folks in the past, and then there was some input. And again, there were some folks that were afraid to say something for fear of repercussion. This is not vindictive in any way. We're looking to have something on the, on the books that takes care of a situation that we think needs to be taken care of. We can always amend this, you know, next year, whatever, but I think right now, we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scanell?
I was just going to, Alder Steuer stole my thunder. I was just going to reiterate that, I don't know, we've heard a lot of hypotheticals of what could happen if this is passed. I don't think there's anything to worry about, but if I'm wrong, if something does happen within, that inhibits a business with one of the hypotheticals or anything else that comes up, they should come forward, and we can have that discussion and see what we can do about amending the law. So, Alder Steuer beat me to it, so I have nothing to say.
Sounds good. Thanks, Alder. We've got Alder Hutchinson for a second time? No? Alder Campbell?
Yeah, you know, I've been self-employed for many, many years. I've had liquor licenses in two counties at one time. I've been a member, and, you know, I try to get along with every municipality. I'm never breaking any laws. I've always abided by all the licenses. I've always paid the fees. I've always paid the taxes. This is the cost of business. I'm, I'm looking at this from a business standpoint and the fees and a city services that I think make your businesses safer and better. And I'm, I'm strictly on the business side of it. I'm hoping sure that everybody here is a legitimate person, but there is stuff that goes on around town. And as a citizen, you don't notice it when you get into it as a little more deeper, like we care about our community, our districts. There's a lot that you don't understand that goes on that's here. And it, it feels great to be part of something that's going to change the safety and the welfare of the city of Green Bay. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments? Seeing none, we will use the board. Yep, the motion is to approve the ordinance. To adopt with a second reading?
Mayor, Mayor, I vote yes.
Thanks, Alder.
You may vote.
And the ordinance is adopted eleven to one. We are now on to, I think we're on, Report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any extensions or names to be handled separately? Seeing none. All in favor, will signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. And then one, just brief pause here, exercise a point of personal privilege, I suppose, for an additional announcement. And I didn't catch this right away, so apologies to our director of the Brown County Library, but she was in attendance and had filled out a little bit of a, an announcement slip here. I think she was just intending to let people know that the new and refreshed East Branch Library is going to be having a ribbon cutting on, I believe it's Saturday, September sixteenth, from nine-thirty a.m. to two p.m. in Alder Morgan's district. So, assuming she was encouraging everyone to, to attend and celebrate the new branch that's, that's reopening in the neighborhood, so. So, apologies to, to her for missing that. And then we're on to Report of the Plan Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none. All in favor, will signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Report of the Finance Committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Parks Committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Ek. Items here to be handled? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Personnel Committee? Motion to approve by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scanell. Items here to be handled separately? Number two. Any others? None. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item two. Your wishes? Motion to approve by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. That was pulled by Alder Burnett. You have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. The council recalls that the last council meeting, this was held for the reason that Director Ellenbecker was not going to be in attendance to explain the need for this position. So, if you didn't see it at the last Personnel Committee meeting, that is why. I guess if Director Ellenbecker could just explain the, the reasoning behind the position, why it's needed now versus to be considered later during the budget process.
Director Ellenbecker?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, and I thank you for holding it and allowing me to speak tonight versus two weeks ago when I left the last council meeting. Again, this is a position that has been needed for a very, very long time. Like many departments, you know, we continue to get more and more work and try to do it with the same current staff that we have. So, one of the biggest additional responsibilities we've received was to take on tax, taking tax collections back into the finance office so that this is going, actually going on fourth year, and that'll be this fall. And so, this position would be really responsible and really oversee the collection of taxes for, for the city of Green Bay. There, you know, there's a list of job duties that this position would take. And then really, they would be taking in and assisting really the treasurer, which is Assistant Finance Director Treasurer, and then the Finance Director. They would help take on some of the tasks on our, on our plates. Back to, it was not requested at two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-three budget. Certainly, there was a need. We just did not put it in there. Certainly have asked for it for in two thousand and twenty-four. But in the discussions, when it would really, really be helpful would be this fall. Tax collection really starts the first week of December. There's a week or two ramp up to get ready for it, and of course, we have to hire some temporary staff. So, to really have this really have a huge impact would be, it'd be nice to be able to hire this position, get approval, start the recruitment. Could take till, you know, September, October to recruit this person if, if they're available, and then they would be able to take over tax collection and oversee it for really, end of November to really, it's about the second week of February. Then there's paperwork and cleanup. So, that is the reason why I'm requesting, not only in the two thousand and twenty-four budget, but really, could, could it be approved, you know, a couple of months earlier, the two thousand and twenty-four three budget? The twenty twenty-four three budget, we didn't, we did budget for interest, interest revenue, and it is just a line item within the twenty twenty-three budget that is running well above and ahead of the budget. So that this position also really does oversee the investments and would be able to, this really even probably help increase interest revenues as this person would get into their position. So again, that is why I'm asking for it a little bit earlier, so I could feel the real impact of this position if they were to be able to start this fall instead of early into twenty twenty-four.
Director Ellenbecker, overall, how is the city trending this year for money saved on positions not filled as an organization and specifically in your department?
I don't think I could at this moment. We do have a spreadsheet that I could update. I don't have that actual number in front of me right now. In my department, I had an open position for about two, two and a half months from February really till, till April. Let me think about that. Nope, it was February till early June, so I had a position open for about four months in, within, directly in finance. I have a current open position in the purchasing department, which often also falls under administrative services. That position has also been open for now about four to five months. So just in administrative services, we've had two positions that would certainly outweigh the hiring this person three months early.
Okay, thank you. Just for the council's sake, that, you know, the main hesitancy I had at the committee level was that, you know, normally these issues are discussed as part of the budget process, but we also need to be nimble as an organization and not overly rigid. For me, the, the issue I had was, how is this position more important than perhaps a police officer being added, or firefighter, or a laborer in the Public Works Department, or any other critical city position? Because they're all important, and how do we weigh this one over other positions? This one, you know, the, the catch here is that we're approving it now, which then becomes part of our normal table of organization with basically a commitment to fund it well into the future. And that, you know, I'm conflicted on, but then I was really contemplating the demands on the finance department over the last few years with ARPA and federal grants and all other dollars, and the fact that, you know, we have a lot of really good city departments, and our finance department, led by Director Ellenbecker, has been exceptional to the point that I never have worries about their department. And so I'm going to probably surprise a lot of people and, and say that I'm going to support it, and I'm not going to vote no. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I, I support the position, too. I think we ask our staff to tell us when they're in trouble, and I think this is the finance department telling us they're in trouble. And it's because of decisions that we supported as a council to add more work into that department. And so I would say if there's, if, if your inclination would be to support this position in the, and for the record, I appreciate everything Alder Burnett said and agree. And, and so, but if the inclination is that you would support this position in twenty-four to help with that workload that they're experiencing right now because of decisions we made to add that workload, I see no reason to delay that hire, because, and Director Ellenbecker alluded at this, but to get this person on board now and trained so that when the property tax bills come out, that we're ready to go, and that we're not trying to train someone at the same time that they need to be doing the work.
Very good. Alder Eck?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Is this, isn't this the position that Pam Manley had, or is this different?
Right, so Director Ellenbecker, if you want to clarify that?
I could certainly answer that. This would be a different one. The position that Pam Manley, our Assistant Finance Director, Treasurer, was, has been filled by, back in, in June. And so again, this need has been there for a long time. So yes, having a new person in that position, who she was doing fantastic, still trying having this additional responsibilities, so having new staff, there is more work for, you know, there is really more work than that new person could ever do, and, you know, it is an additional position.
Okay, thank you. It just sounded like the same.
Right, just to kind of succinctly answer it, you know, this is a deputy treasurer position.
Correct.
Pam Manley was our treasurer and assistant finance director.
Okay, maybe that's where the confusion comes in.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments? But don't tell Pam, because she's, yeah, exactly. Any other comments or questions? All right. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, and that item is approved. Couple informational items, building report and municipal court report for July twenty twenty-three in the packet, and then one resolution. Motion to adopt made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion? We'll use the board.
You may vote.
Mayor, I vote yes.
Thanks, Alder.
Here, let me do it again. Oh, all right. You may vote.
Ordinance is first reading.
Motion to not suspend the rule. Motion to advance.
Motion to advance by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and that ordinance has been advanced to a second and final reading. Petitions and communications?
adjournment.
Motion to adjourn by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks.[1600.21]